Good evening. Thank you all for being with us tonight for the Wednesday City Council Meeting, November 20, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. I now call the meeting to order, and would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Thank you very much. Allison, will we have roll call, please?
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee?
Present.
Counselor Novak?
She's on the way.
Thank you. Counselor Newton Azor?
Present.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Here.
Counselor Monague?
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is Business from the Public. Business from the Public is a time with Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during Business from the Public, but will take comments or requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and when three people or more are speaking on one topic, it will be five minutes, must follow the council's rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When arriving at the microphone, please give your name and state whether you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. So the first one that signed up to speak is Susan Leonard. Three minutes, please.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to speak briefly about the importance of a strong school district, as I think that is very relevant to the work of the city council. I'm not a teacher. My kids didn't go to GAPS because I lived somewhere else when they were in school, but we were very involved with that school district and now are involved with the GAPS school district because this is the community we live in. A good school district is a key indicator of a desirable community to live in. And really, in the broadest sense, isn't that the job of the city council to make sure that Albany is a desirable community? All students need to feel that they belong in their school and in their community. When students with different cultural, language, and ethnic backgrounds, or LGBTQ students, or students with disabilities feel welcomed and represented in the wider community, and the community is engaged with the school district, learning and attendance improve. When teachers feel supported by community involvement in the school district, their morale improves. We all want happy people teaching our children, right? Smart local businesspeople understand that a strong school district ensures that there will be a well-educated pool of future employees. A strong school district increases property values, leads to more economic development, and attracts new young families to the area. It improves the overall quality of life in a community. A healthy school district produces responsible, engaged citizens, trained in using critical thinking skills. These are the people who will lead our community in the future, start new businesses, produce art, build and maintain our infrastructure, perhaps run for mayor or city council, and teach the next generation of students. I have attended many GAPS school board meetings, talked with teachers and administrators, and read the requests the GAEA is making. Their requests are reasonable and necessary to ensure that GAPS teachers are sufficiently supported and safe. The teachers are striking because, under the current conditions, they are not able to provide the best education possible for all students, the education that our students and our community deserves. Knowing how important a strong school district is to the health of a community, I am asking the Albany city leadership to fully support the Greater Albany Education Association so that we can get our teachers and students back in the classrooms, which is where I know they all want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next onto Business from the Council, Business from the Public, excuse me, is Christine Ferguson.
I'm Christine Ferguson. I live in Albany and am in charge of the Veteran's Day Parade. Mr. Mayor and council members, citizens of Albany, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I would like to know how many of you were at the Veteran of the Year banquet, how many of you were at the Starbisson Stripes Ball to raise funds for the Leekup Vets Program?
Banquet and parade, I'm sorry.
I know Mayor Johnson was at the Veteran of the Year banquet for a short time because it was his wedding anniversary, and as far as I could see, no one representing the city of Albany was at either function to hear the speakers, to congratulate the award winners. When I asked some, some said I didn't know about it. The Veteran of the Year banquet has been going on for 73 years and usually is the evening before the parade. The only time it is not the evening before the parade is when the parade is on a Monday, then the banquet is on Saturday evening. Another excuse I heard was I was not invited. Really? You need an invitation to acknowledge and honor the veterans of our community? I am inviting you to the next Veteran of the Year banquet in 2025 on Monday, November 10th at 6:00 p.m. Today, I do not know where it will be held, but you can always check out the VFW 584 website to glean that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sheriff Michelle Duncan, Emma Dean, and John Phelps. So we're going to give you five minutes as you're speaking the same topic.
So I'll start, Sheriff Michelle Duncan. I'm not an Albany resident, however, as many of you know, the sheriff's office is located in the city limits of Albany.
I'm Emma Dean, Executive Director for Chance, and I do live in Albany.
I'm John Phelps. I live in Albany, and I am the Director of Second Chance Shelter.
So the reason I'm coming here to you today with the support of Emma and John next to me, and it's a little bit of an awkward position for me in law enforcement to come before a city council asking for basically some regulation that's outside of my control. We have been having some issues with parking in particular along Jackson Street in between. We have an evidence yard on one side and, of course, our office on the other. We've had numerous homeless folks parking there that have caused issues for us. These are folks that, talking to Emma and John, that are not engaged in the services that they are offered or have become problematic for their facility there. The problems that I run into, and like I said, it's awkward for me to ask for help for something like this because normally I'm in the position of law enforcement and I'm the one that helps. However, there are certain city ordinances, we don't have an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Albany to enforce those ordinances for parking and other things. As well as, a lot of people don't think about that a good portion of my staff are not sworn. I have had, over the last six months, a dispatcher ask me about that, that, actually, most of our dispatchers have commented on being fearful to even park out in our front parking lot because they've, one in particular was accosted by a naked male. Another felt somebody was yelling and screaming at them as they're trying to exit, leaving their shift. Our deputies are out throughout the county and not always in the office. There have been multiple times at our evidence yard, which is mostly attended or visited by, for business matters, by our non-sworn staff. Multiple instances of them cleaning up needles, feces. We had, had to have our walls recently before the rains power washed because of the urine and other debris that was smeared along our wall. We had some of our employees that are getting charged by dogs and other things coming out of these vehicles. We spent over $30,000 actually in fencing recently just on our evidence yard to help protect that property and those employees. Like I said, we have search and rescue kids that come visit on a regular basis, applicants, other non-sworn people for training at our facility. What I'm asking is that I know that there's a permitting system in place and that that permitting system be expanded to that Jackson Street area to make sure that the businesses, including mine, have access to the parking along that street and make it a safer environment for all of our employees.
So I would just add, again, John and I are here in support of this request. We want to be really good neighbors to the individuals around us and in our community. A majority of the individuals staying in vehicles outside of the shelter or just outside around the shelter, individuals that have been trespassed from our facility due to safety concerns and aggressive behavior. We've seen some other agencies showing up, giving out items that then either one of us ends up cleaning up. We want to support people, connect them to resources in a safe way, and right now, what is happening is not safe, and we would like some support creating a safe space out front for everyone.
Did the walk around with the sheriff's department, every single vehicle that they were saying was a problem was people that had been trespassed from the shelter.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is Executive Director Lisa Grado.
Good evening. Lisa Grado, Executive Director, Albany Downtown Association, with a quick downtown update. Thank you for having me here this evening. I just wanted to remind everybody that the holidays are upon us. If you haven't been downtown, please check out the holiday windows that have been unwrapped and look gorgeous. We have about 16 or more windows now that are in full beauty for the holidays. Coming up soon is Small Business Saturday, which is a nationwide initiative. Shop Small on Saturday, November 30. Also wanted to note that White Christmas is playing at the Albany Civic Theater. That starts on November 29th and runs through December 21st. Also wanted to bring up that the Twice Around Parade is coming up. It is on Sunday, December 1st, which is the day after Small Business Saturday, so we're going to have a very busy four-day Thanksgiving weekend. We are looking for additional volunteers. We still have entries open at this time, those close on Friday. And also wanted to extend our annual invitation to the council and their families and other staff, if they would like, to join us on the Albany Trolley. So we'll talk to you about that more. Also coming up is the First Friday Sweater Party. That's our event on December 6th, so wear your favorite sweater, ugly or not, come downtown. We'll have carolers from West Albany then, and at the parade, it's South Albany. So we'll have fun and we'll have the trolley for that as well. One step back to the parade also is that we will are hopeful that there will be rides on the horse-drawn carriages. They may not appear in the parade, but they will quite likely be thereafter, thanks to Birch of Metals and our partnership with the Visitor's Association. Final thing on my event list is the Historic Home Parlor Tours, put on by the Visitor's Association in partnership with the Montis Society. That is on Sunday, December 8th. And then my final minutes here is just wanted to thank our volunteers. It is the season to be thankful, and we couldn't do anything that we do, not just with our city partners and Oregon Main Street and the other folks that we work with alongside the Visitor's Association, but all the committees that we have and the individuals who volunteer at different events throughout the year. So if you'd like to learn more about any of that, please check out our newsletter or just give me a call or stop in. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Thank you. Do you have no, Fire Force or Works? Okay, thank you. Number four, next on the agenda is Adoption of Resolution, ambulance service fee increase. Fire Chief Chris LaBelle, pages three through seven of your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Also with me tonight is Division Chief Ray Woldridge. He oversees our EMS division. He put a lot of work into this project, so I just would publicly thank him for his work, as well if we get any tricky questions, he's my backup to help answer anything. So the request this evening is approval for an ambulance rate increase and the addition of a new fee related to wall time, which I'll explain a little bit more about here shortly. We feel it's imperative that we are good stewards of the city finances and taxpayer dollars, that constantly evaluating our fee structure is a important part of that process. We haven't increased our ambulance rate since 2019. The last five years, we've seen significant increases in the cost of maintenance, fuel, personnel, and equipment. It's our goal that the ambulance program be self-sufficient and not rely on additional money from the general fund. Since we do have such a large ambulance service area that extends well beyond the city of Albany, many of the patients that we treat and transport are not taxpayers in our community, so we need to ensure that the ambulance rate are appropriately placed, not to place financial burden on those not utilizing this service. Taking a historical look at inflation over the last five years, we also feel that adding language that ties an annual increase to CPI will also ensure that we don't fall behind on revenue as we currently have today. Now transitioning to the wall time. Wall time is related to the amount of time we waited at a hospital with a patient on our stretcher prior to the hospital staff taking over patient care. The wall time fee is due to us, but several other departments in our area have already added this fee. Ambulance service providers continue to be met with challenges of significant wait times with dropping off patients at area hospitals. Local fire departments have been working with Samaritan Health on ensuring a quick and smooth transition with transferring care after transport. However, there is still significant room for improvement. With our resources already stretched there due to record number of calls for service, continual strides for improvement must be made. The goal of this new fee is not one of trying to increase revenue, but rather remind hospitals that they need to make a priority to get our ambulances back in service as quickly as possible so they're available for the next 911 call. I would be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Counsel? Thank you, Chief. Counselor Monague?
Yeah, is it common practice to automatically adjust emergency services, service costs to a CPI? Is that common throughout different department or different cities?
That's not, we, actually, that was the idea of Deputy City Manager, the Finance Director. I think it's a really good one, since we are seeing significant increase such as like personnel costs. The city of Dallas actually does it. That's actually where we got the language from, so I think it really is a step in the right direction, knowing that we'll continue to see these increases in costs.
Yeah, I was just curious if any other cities had done that, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Any other counselors have anything? Counselor Kupczynski?
I'm good with it.
I did have a question about bariatric. I saw that in there, and I want to understand what that means.
Yep, so patients over a certain weight, that was something that we've kind of done away with, but we did want to leave it into the fee schedule. That was a point in time where we had to have special stretchers, and so there was some added things that went into going and treating and loading those patients up. We're at a point now where our stretchers are able to do a lot of that stuff, and so we kept the fee in there, but it doesn't really come up as an issue like it used to.
I just wanted, I hadn't heard that term before. So, Counsel? Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's--
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's not that I don't think everybody's interested in fuel contracts, the next agenda, but you had, normally you offer a chance for people to speak from the Business from the Public, and I'm thinking there might be people here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, you're absolutely right. I apologize for that. I normally go off script and do that. Would anyone in the House in the chamber like to speak during Business from the Public? Thank you. Next, award, thank you, Peter. Award of Contracts, City Fuel Services and Products, Director Jaeger, on pages eight through 11 of your packet.
Tonight, we are requesting that council approve a resolution that allows us to award contracts to two different companies for fueling services. This is a little bit different than we've done it before. We had a contract with PetroCard for their card lock services, but this year, when it was expiring, we decided to really make sure it go citywide to see if anybody else needed these services, and we combined both the card lock services, which is used for vehicles, and also for delivery, so when we have tanks that have fuel in them. So that we did a multi-award. We have, we're awarding to PetroCard for the card lock services, and then we'd like to award to Carson for the delivery and emergency services. I can tell you about the, you know, why we're doing this. So Finance is in charge of this because it's a citywide contract, but I really know not a whole lot about fuel, so I brought Mike Bryan from Public Works here, so if you have any questions about that specifically, he will be the one to help you out on that.
Thank you, Director. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Kupczynski, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Comment. Counselor Smith has a comment. I appreciate the way that the differences between the two businesses, and these people will do this and these will do this, and it's very clearly stated in the memo. That was very helpful for me.
I will let Diane know that, she wrote it, so.
Well done. All those in, all those in favor say aye. Excuse me, do you have a motion?
I move we approve the resolution on page eight.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. And I do apologize, I'm kind of a scatterbrain. I work from 5:00 in the morning, 8:00 at night during this time of year, so thank you for checking me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of Agreement, IGA with Lynn Benton Community College, Eric Iconoye, our Library Director, on pages 12 through 19 of your packet. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yeah, you did.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Counsel. This is just an agreement between Albany Public Library and LBCC. We're going to provide some limited cataloging services for their items. It's a very small amount. Probably don't want me to get into the specifics of cataloging. It'd be far too long, but it's just a way we can help them out, but also make sure that we're recouping a little bit of our staff's time to help them out, so.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question.
Counselor Smith?
What kind of items?
You know, it's not, unfortunately, I don't think it's going to be anything super fun, but it's, so--
I'm interested.
Typically, you've got two kinds of cataloging. You've got copy cataloging, which is exactly what it sounds like. You literally copy and paste, and then you make a few little adjustments. And then there's what's called original cataloging, and that's where if, it's going to take a little more staff time to enter in for the different, for the details of the items. So these are going to be slightly more esoteric items, items that you're going to find more in an academic setting than you would find in a public library setting. So it's going to be kind of like those odd sorts of textbook-type things, or maybe some more things that maybe aren't as widely used.
Specialized things that don't circulate all that much, but you need to know where they are.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Newton Azor?
I had a quick question. Have we done something like this with LBCC previously?
No, this is a new agreement. We've, if you remember, a year and a half ago, you know, they had--
They laid off all their library staff?
Yeah, significant budget cuts, so yeah, this is a little way we can help out with that service, so. And honestly, we've had some of the smaller libraries in the consortium ask about this sort of service through us as well, and we figured this would probably be a good pilot for that service, but we also need to be able to manage it staffing-wise, so.
Okay.
So would a person be at LBCC, or they would bring materials?
No, that, we have a courier service that brings all the items between the libraries, so they get couriered over and then couriered back, so they'd be, it'd be a staff member at APL doing the work, so.
Is this, is this taking away from any of our, I know you guys do a lot on a shoestring budget, is this taking away from any of the programs or activities?
No, this is really going to be, what it'll come down to is it's one staff member who does all their work primarily in the back, and they're their technical services staff member, so they don't, it should not take away from any time. And that's, that's the other reason why I wanted an agreement, because I wanted to make sure that we didn't just say, okay, we can do this, and then, next thing I know, my staff member is spending as much time doing stuff for LBCC as they are for APL. So yeah, it's kind of a way to check that.
Okay.
Counselor McGee, you have anything? Counselor Kupczynski, do you have anything?
I'm okay.
Counselor Novak?
I always speak up when I have something, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Monague? So we have a request, and is there a motion?
I move we approve the agreement between the Albany Public Library and LBCC.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is Adoption of the, well, thank you, Director. Adoption of the Consent Calendar, item seven of your agenda. Any counsel would like to make any changes or approve or make a motion?
Yes.
Which item?
I would like to pull 7D1 for discussion, please.
7D1. Cardigan, okay.
I'm interested.
Typically, you've got two kinds of cataloging. You've got copy cataloging, which is exactly what it sounds like. You literally copy and paste and then you make a few little adjustments. And then there's what's called original cataloging, and that's where if, it's going to take a little more staff time to enter in for, for the different, for the details of the items. So these are going to be slightly more esoteric items, items that you're going to find more in an academic setting than you would find in a public library setting. So it's, it's going to be kind of like those odd sorts of textbook type things, or maybe some more things that maybe aren't as widely used.
Specialized things that don't circulate all that much, but you need to know where they are.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Duenazor?
I had a quick question. Have we done something like this with LBCC previously?
No, this is a new agreement. We've, if you remember, a year and a half ago, you know, they had pretty-
They laid off all their library staff?
Yeah, significant budget cuts. So yeah, this is a little way we can help out with that service, so. And honestly, we've had some of the smaller libraries in the consortium ask about this sort of service through us as well, and we figured this would probably be a good pilot for, for that service. But we also need to be able to manage it staffing wise, so.
Okay.
So would a person be at LBCC or they bring materials?
No, that, we have a courier service that brings all the items between the libraries, so they get couriered over and then couriered back, so they'd be, it'd be a staff member at APL doing the work, so.
Is this, is this taking away from any of our, I know you guys do a lot on a shoestring budget, is this taking away from any of the programs or activities?
No, this is really going to be, what it'll come down to is, it's one staff member who does all their work primarily in the back, anyway, they're, they're technical services staff members, so they don't, it should not take away from any time. And that's, that's the other reason why I wanted an agreement, because I wanted to make sure that we didn't just say, okay, we can do this, and then next thing I know, my staff member is spending as much time doing stuff for LBCC as they are for, for APL. So yeah, it's kind of a way to check that.
Okay.
Counsel, McGee, you have anything? Counselor Kopczynski, do you have anything?
I'm okay.
Counselor Novak?
I always speak up when I have something, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Monogue? So we have a request and is there a motion?
I move we approve the agreement between the Albany Public Library and LBCC.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of the, well, thank you, Director. Adoption of the consent counter, item seven on your agenda. Any council would like to make any changes or approve or make a motion?
Yes.
Which item?
I would like to pull 7D1 for discussion, please.
Cardigan, okay. Okay. Counsel, the rest of the, I got you. Okay, so please, explain.
Thank you. Today's paperwork lists a one-time cost of $25,000 for implementation of this program, but according to the statement of work, and I did note this at the work session on November 4th, the amount for the initial setup is actually $36,335 for a total of $61,210.04, which includes the annual fee of $24,875.04. I just wanted to mention that I did the math, and again, most of this work is remote, the training that's involved over the course of eight months. It says up to 36 hours of remote training and one onsite visit, possibly two. If there are two onsite visits, that brings the cost per hour of this mostly remote training to $660.63 an hour. If it's only one onsite visit along with the 36 hours of remote training over eight months, it's $825.79 per hour. That, to me, seems like an awful lot of money for what is mostly remote training. And while I can appreciate the fact that ultimately this would make it easier for Parks and Rec to track the equipment and everything, I just, it's sort of, I, I just can't get away from the idea of government waste. It's like when the government does something and a hammer costs $500. I'm just, I, I'm sure someone must have looked at the math here besides me. I, how, how long is it going to take to recoup the cost on this? I know it's going to be another $25,000 a year as long as you use the program. I'm, I'm just wondering, at the rate of up to $825.79 for training, when, when do we, when do we even out? Or do we?
Well, Counselor, you considered this, Counsel considered this two work sessions ago. I think Kim LaDain, Director LaDain is online, so she may be able to address that. I know that there's more that goes into that than simple, than a simple division of one number by another.
Probably.
So I would turn it, I would ask her to comment on that.
Director?
Sure, thank you very much. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. So thank you for the question. That is a competitive rate. If, if, I know we had conversations before as to the amount of time it would take to recoup the general overall cost, and at our last meeting, I mentioned that this is being tracked in spreadsheets and kind of all over the place. I think what I probably failed to stress the last time around is that a lot of the information that is being tracked is generally institutional knowledge by longstanding staff members who have worked here 15 to 25 years each. And so while I can't, because we don't have something like this system, I'm not able to actually pinpoint as to how many months or it'll take to recoup the costs, but I do know that if we do not put a more sophisticated management system in place, that despite our best efforts, there will be pieces and knowledge that will be missed, that will then become a hindrance to our department and the city as we move forward, as retirements take place.
I, I do appreciate knowing that, and I remember you saying that we had people retiring who have lots of experience, and I don't remember ever asking about recouping the cost at that work session, so that's part of why I wanted to. And I hope you don't feel too on the spot here, you probably weren't expecting this, so thank you. I just, I, when I did the math, and I know it's oversimplified because that's how I do math, I'm, I'm not a math person, but I was just kind of shocked at the numbers. If that is the going rate for a remote call from someone from OpenGov, then that's the going rate. I just, I still find it shocking, I can't help it. In my universe, that's a huge number, but I appreciate you reiterating why you feel compelled to do this at this time. And I have an additional question, and I, I guess it would be directed more toward Peter, but if other departments wanted to do the sort of thing that Parks and Rec is now doing and that Public Works did in 2007, is there any way they could jump on while this training is taking place and then we don't have to do the 25 or the $36,000 startup cost again? Or is it department specific and it doesn't matter and you have to, you know?
Yeah, Kim is, Director LaDain is raising her hand.
Sorry, and I can address that a little bit as well. So the, the additional training and implementation, there is a training portion of it, but a lot of it is also building the system as it will be specifically for our department. They'll add in all of our 33 parks, they'll add in all of the assets from playground equipment to trash cans to benches to barbecues. And so a lot of that money for the one-time implementation is physically them having to go in and put thousands upon thousands of data points into the system in order for us to be able to monitor, track, and do projections on it in the future. So I apologize, I should have clarified that earlier. There is a training portion involved where they're going to come out and show our staff how to actually do it, and how to work on the iPads and how to, you know, make sure that we're tracking things independently and accurately. So there is a training portion of it, but that whole 36 isn't necessarily just them coming out to show us what to do. It's hours upon backlog, of putting in thousands of data points across not only our parks, but our natural spaces, which is almost about 900 acres of assets that we're trying to track. So I hope that provides a little bit of additional clarification.
It does help clarify, but it says up to 36 hours, so there's going to be, they're giving you more than up to 36 hours? That would make me feel better because 36 hours isn't very much for that amount of money, I don't think.
They will do what they need to do to get it uploaded and implemented, but we do have a certain amount of hours, 36, to be able to clarify, ask questions onsite, in person. After they've left, we're going to be pinging them, I guarantee it. So it's, the, the 36 is for the full implementation of building the system once we sign the contract.
That was my understanding. So it is up to 36 hours and one onsite visit, possibly two, and then we fly them out anytime they need to come back out here, and that's at our expense.
Yes, from what I understand, though, they haven't had to come back out for Public Works, and so we're, I, we don't anticipate them having to come back out again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, counsel. Next on tonight's agenda, staff reports. A word of OSFM Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant, Fire Chief Crystal Bell.
For counsel, it requested permission to apply for a grant from the State Fire Marshal's Office for risk reduction for wildfire. We identified a project that we were hoping to accomplish in the area of southwest 53rd West to the Kalapua River. We were just notified that we've been awarded the grant for $75,000, and so the request this evening is permission to accept the grant.
Hurry up, get it, get it.
Counsel, McGee?
Take the grant.
Counsel? I have a motion?
What she said.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll move that we accept the award of OSFM Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Do you have a question? Do we have any other areas that have been identified for wildfire reduction?
That, that's, we have areas that we have areas of concern, but we haven't actually identified potential places to apply for grants, but I think this is a good start, knowing that this program is out there, that we will start to identify some of those areas and continue to apply for grants in the future.
Okay, because this is going to be vegetation between Kalapua River and neighborhood on 53rd Avenue Southwest.
Yes.
Which I think is, yeah, that's Ward Two. That's, that's your neck in the woods. So yeah, if we have any other areas of concern, let's get at them.
My house is out there too, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fire Chief. Next on tonight's agenda-
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I just clear one thing up? Counselor Novak, just a procedural thing, she pulled the item from the consent agenda.
For discussion.
You had a discussion, and I'm, I'm taking it that it's been back on the consent agenda and the whole consent agenda was approved.
That's what I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is disposition of real property at Ninth Avenue and Jackson Street. And, say again?
There was an item before that.
There's an item before that? Oh, I crossed it off, sorry about that. Item before that is modification of existing accessibility easement through the city property, Director Matthew Rutgers, page 49 to 52 in your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Give me one second, I did want to throw something up on the screen, but it is not, it's not cooperating with you. I'll, I'll try to do it without until maybe Kinsey can clear the last person that was sharing.
He says you're good.
Maybe. Check, make that a little bit bigger there. So for this item, Mr. Sorty back in, we're, I, I won't go through the entire memo, I'll kind of give you an executive summary because we've been over this a couple times, but just for, for history's sake, back in June of 2020, the council had asked staff to, or provided direction to staff to move forward with an agreement to provide Mr. Sorty, or to work on an agreement with Mr. Sorty to provide access to his parcel, which you can see on the screen here, and that, that access was going to be based off of the end of Moose Run and then up to, you can see the Sorty parcel two. In the course of, excuse me, doing that, there were a couple different options, and ultimately we settled on that, because Mr. Sorty wanted to sell the parcel. And in order to do that, he, he also didn't want to build the actual driveway going in there, so no bank would finance on the property, so we settled on essentially a paper easement or a legal access that connected shortest route possible from a legal right of way to his, his parcel, which resulted in the easement that you see on the screen here. And that was just what we refer to as, if you don't know, I'm actually, was a licensed surveyor, still am a licensed surveyor, we refer to him as a paper easement, because it doesn't actually serve a physical use on the ground, it was just on paper to connect the parcels. So with that, and the intent there was when and if there were going to be a driveway built, that that easement would be realigned along a path that, that could be approved. Mr. Sorty then went about engaging with a wetland consultant and a consulting engineer to come up with a path off the end of Moose Run that would eventually serve his parcel, which is this parcel two, and that it ran a path, I'm not sure, you can't really see my mouse, but essentially from the end of Moose Run, it ran up and went around wetlands up through here. The challenge was, and as we heard from several of the neighbors that are actually here tonight, it, it did go through an area that's pretty heavily forested. There was a lot of concerns about removal of trees and some of the habitat that was in that area, and ultimately, there was also an issue brought up of a potential for deed restriction on, on that parcel, Track J that you see, which is where the easement portions of it would run. Ultimately, you know, we, we left the meeting back in November of 23 with direction to kind of explore this a little bit further, did in fact find that there is a restriction over that parcel, which essentially made the easement null and void, they couldn't use it for any vehicular access. It was very, very specific about that, and some of this might be juggling some memories here, hopefully. So we left that meeting with basically no action, we weren't going to modify an easement. This was essentially, they weren't able to move forward in this location. Since then, Mr. Sorty has kind of went back to the drawing board, excuse me, and tried to come up with another option, which I'll assume to now, and based on not only the, the presence of that, that deed restriction over Track J, over the original alignment, but also from the input from the neighbors about, you know, removal of trees, things like that, he's come back with a, a new proposal for a modified easement alignment. And this alignment would essentially follow, if you follow my, my little cursor here, off the end of Osprey, and we have a water line that runs along, along this same path, and there's a, it's not an improved road, it was an access road that was constructed or basically was formed when they installed the water line, and it would follow that alignment up until it gets to where the BPA line is, the Bonneville Power, Power Administration, and then follow their access, which is again, an unimproved, essentially two, they call them two tracks, which, because it just leaves two tracks in the grass, all the way up to where his property line is. And they're proposing to essentially vacate the existing easement that is of, of no use, you can't use it, and recreate or establish a replacement easement along the alignment you see here in red. What we're, what staff is bringing for you is the information on this, and if, if, if counsel is interested in doing that, we would request that if, if you're interested in modifying that location, completely extinguishing the old easement to direct staff to, to go ahead and create the easement and then obviously authorize Peter to, to sign and to, to formalize it. And I, I want to be clear on one thing, Mr. Sorty, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight, you know, he would have liked to have been, but his intent is to sell the property. I mean, that's what he wants to do, and only one single-family home can be built on this property. No matter the size of, of the property, what it is, they only get to build one single-family home, and that's because of it's being zoned open space. It, it's been open space for a couple decades now. There's a carve-out in the code that allows for a single-family home to be built on open space, and that was done because the old zoning that existed prior to it being designated open space allowed for the construction of one home. So to avoid a Measure 56 notice, which is a taking, right? We, we made a carve-out that if it was a parcel of land created prior to July 1 of 91, which is when the zoning took place, that they could still have the one use that would have been allowed before, which is one single-family home. I know there were, in, in the initial conversations in the past, there was concerns about this being a big development, something like that. The only thing that could ever be built back there is one single-family home, so, and, and the request right now is just to extinguish the old easement that's not usable, create a new easement. It would not authorize any sort of construction that is done through a completely separate land use process that does require public notice and then all of the review criteria that we have to look at for not only crossing wetlands, potential for riparian corridors, Endangered Species Act, all, all of the things that we've talked about before are still in play and would be applied to that land use application to actually build something. This would just be the creation of a replacement easement and vacation of the old easement. With that, I, I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Counselor Smith?
Two questions. Would, is this property included in the floodplain inventory that we talked about on Monday?
It is, so the, the majority of the land, I should have brought a copy of this, the majority of this area is in the floodplain, and in fact, Mr. Sorty's property, a good portion is in the floodway.
That was going to-
Not, not to get into too great a detail, because again, Lance Rera used to do this type of work all the time. Something to know about the FEMA mapping, or the firm maps, flood insurance rate maps, they're, they're sometimes not that accurate. It is, we even have pictures of, and, and he believes that there is a portion of his property up in this northeast corner where the, the proposed easement would lead to is higher ground. And this is not uncommon to find in mapping that's pretty old, that there is areas that are actually higher. And there's a process that you can go through, through FEMA, it's called a letter of map amendment, that can be done where you demonstrate that the mapping is actually incorrect, that this area is actually above that floodplain elevation outside of the floodway, and they amend their maps based on that, that application that you make. And that's one of those elements that prior to any construction of a home, that will have to be sorted out. So I mean, there's, this is the, that first step of creating an access to the property, but before any construction is done, to your point, Counselor Smith, that's part of that review criteria of the, the building of a driveway, and then ultimately the building of a house if one's possible is, is getting a letter of map amendment done, going through the approval process through the city, through maybe the Army Corps, and certainly DSL if there's any wetlands involved. So it's, there's also, as we looked at the prior application, we know that there'll be coordination with the tribes, the Confederated Tribes, about the potential for cultural resources in the area, and Mr. Sorty is aware of all of these things. So it's, it's a, it is a complicated process, as most of our processes can be, especially when you're dealing with a, a situation like this that's, that's touching- especially when you're dealing with a situation like this that's touching a lot of different things. But at this time, they're, like I say, he's looking to create an easement, which based on the presence of the existing two tracks, as I call them, the elevations would work. So there's not really this big challenge of thinking we're going to have to come back and modify it based on a new alignment because it just wasn't, the engineering wasn't feasible. So it's, there's certainty with his consulting engineer and honestly myself that this alignment would work. But obviously, he's crossing city property. We'd be extinguishing an old easement, which requires the council to approve, and replacing it with a new easement, which requires council to approve. So I'm here to kind of give you the facts of the matter and let you discuss and ask questions of me.
Wanted to double check. So I believe we did hear that there might be Native American artifacts on the property. So before even, even if the easement is granted before the road is allowed to be put in, would that cultural study be completed before the road is even, even with these two track roads?
So typically, when we do a land use application and it's in any areas that are even have a suspicion that there might be cultural resources, we are reaching out to the Confederated Tribes and including them on that review. And even with the old application, they were aware of it and provided some feedback that while not impossible to do, they would just want to be on site before any, well, during any earth disturbance. So they are actually out there looking for, because they're the experts, right? Looking for any sort of potential evidence of cultural resources. Obviously, there was a, there was an area right close to Osprey that is currently chain linked in that was identified in the old subdivisions as a cultural resource area, and it's been protected. There is cultural resource mapping, but for, for good reasons, that mapping is not available to the public and the city doesn't even have a copy of it. I have seen it and it's something that we would review against. But to avoid it being searchable through public records, we do not want a copy here.
Would this impact also that you said that the road is on like a waterline road and then another road with another company? And I'm wondering, does that hinder?
Typically, when you, to construct an access or a driveway over our existing facility, it's no different than having a street over the top of existing waterline. There would be easement provisions, just like with any most easements is if we needed to get in there, we would have to replace it to a light condition.
Didn't he say he wanted to sell it to the city for like an astronomical amount?
There was discussions a couple of times about, hey, would the city be interested in buying it? And it's not of a value that the city would be, would be interested in taking it on.
Okay.
We have, we have plenty of open space.
So I believe Counselor Kupczynski had a question or concern?
Yes, just hypothetically, and you touched on it just briefly. First off, I applaud staff trying to work with Mr. Sorty to try and make this happen so he doesn't have a perpetually landlocked with zero options. But looking at that pathway, hypothetically, what would a, if he wanted to build a home and it was approved, what would the roadway look like? I mean, would it be a full up to city standards type roadway on just over an easement? Or how would that come about?
So being as this is serving one single family home or would, could be serving a single family home, this is not a street. This is not a road. This is a driveway like you would think of a normal driveway. We've had some discussions with the fire department. Laurel Ratcliffe, our fire marshal, has provided some input on what that driveway would look like. I believe minimum width requirement would be two, Chris is going to hit me with something if I get this wrong. I think it's 12 feet wide and every 400 feet, they would have to provide a turnout for the fire engines. So.
Thank you.
Waiting for a shoe to hit me.
Any other counsel, Counselor Kupczynski, are you finished?
And just for clarification, Counselor Kupczynski, that's, it'd be an all weather surface. So it could, it's not going to have curb and gutters or sidewalks. That could just be a compacted gravel driveway. It could be an asphalt driveway.
But that would then be, the maintenance of such would be up to the homeowner.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Monague.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you said. What I think I heard you say was that the easement as it exists right now is pretty much null and void due to the restrictions that are on that specific pathway. So this is what I think you're saying is this is probably the best option to provide an easement to this property for this property owner. Correct?
Correct. The easement that currently exists that you'll see on this picture here that runs right off the end of Moose Run is not usable. You can't use it for any sort of vehicular access. He could walk on it. That's just about it. So it provides a connection, a legal connection to the property that's currently landlocked. It wouldn't, couldn't be used for any sort of driveway access or anything like this. So again, based on that input, when he was originally looking at alignment that would come off of Moose Run and kind of snake its way through some of those trees, which inevitably would have resulted in the loss of some trees, which provided some concerns from the neighborhood, obviously. And he's taken that input and tried to provide another option that doesn't have any proposed tree removal. He's trying to, you know, respond to the negative comments that he heard and actually take those seriously, which I can respect that.
The other counselors have anything? Thank you. So do we need two motions to remove the other one? Or are you going to bring this back?
The documents themselves, there's a couple of ways and Sean, you can step in here is we could prepare the basically vacation documents of the existing easement and the new documents for the proposed easement and bring them back for council to approve. Or the council could opt to basically provide direction to staff to go ahead and prepare those documents and authorize Peter to sign them. Now, it's really up to you if you want to see the finalized documents before they're signed. But I'm okay either way.
If you, the first option where you bring it back here, does that allow for public comment?
Well, it's not a public hearing because the city grants easements across its properties. I'm not going to say all the time, but it doesn't require a public hearing or any sort of public comment. But as we've seen here tonight and at all of our council meetings, there's always an opportunity for the public to provide comment from business from the public, which is before everything. So you kind of get to take that into account. And there is a reason that the neighbors are here tonight, and that's because I called them and told them that we were going to be here and this is what we were going to be talking about. So it's, we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly, in every way that we can be.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Very much. This is round three for this easement?
Three or four.
Four. Is this one, does this have a better chance of actually sticking this time?
This is probably, of the alignments that we see, you know, I don't, I hesitate to give a personal opinion, but you know, if I dive back into my old background of engineering and surveying is this is a valid alignment that would work. It's currently, you could drive out there today and drive this entire alignment and it would work. I think of the options, this is probably the best option that we've seen and is viable. So I'll just leave it at that.
Is this outside the city limits?
It is not.
It's, okay.
So the, part of the reason that obviously we're here tonight is Mr. Sorty, the part of his property, he owns one lot that's on the east side of the Kalapuyi, which is inside the city limits. And then directly on the other side of the Kalapuyi, he owns another parcel of land where his house is that is actually in Lynn County. So.
Thanks.
Counsel, what would you like to do today?
So I was, I was just thinking because of the public's interest in this, it would probably be a better idea for us to approve that than having Peter do that. But that's.
Well, he would have to sign it no matter what.
Right, but we would approve it.
Counselor Novak.
And I feel kind of the opposite because this is like the fourth go around. I would just as soon finish this up and have Peter sign it and be done. That's my feeling.
I'm inclined to agree with Counselor Novak with that.
I think the neighbors are happy that it's not going in the other place. That's what I understand. Correct?
I mean, they didn't provide testimony tonight. You know, I think it's, I don't want to speak for the neighbors. Is it the lesser of two evils, for lack of a better expression? Probably. You know, I, the biggest assurance I can offer is that it's one single family home. Obviously, that there was a lot of fear in the prior discussions that this was going to be a big development that could go back there, which comes with traffic and all of the things that happened. Now, realistically, is if this, you know, property were to sell, somebody comes in and this is kind of building that dream home scenario, right? It's a very expensive process to build a driveway this long, go through the land use, go through a Loma process with FEMA, and then actually build the home. Will there be increased traffic through the duration of the construction of a home? Yes. And that is a short window of time. Eventually, that gets settled back down into the traffic that's associated with one single family home.
Counsel.
You know, get it done. We've been dragging this out for so long.
Thank you.
As a viable option.
I was going to say, if this comes back, we better run a punch card policy, you know, get five easements drawn, get the sixth one, yeah.
Get a free coffee. So Counsel, want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to go move ahead, get it done.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, Director. I need to take a five minute break. My contact stuck to my eyeball.
Sure. You still can't run from me. I'll be right here when you get back.
Huh?
You can't run from me. I'll be right here when you get back.
Okay. Okay. I got to go take my solution. Who's that? Who's that? Oh. That's not it.
(coughs)
Very much for everyone for, for being patient with me. Every once in a while, this contact sticks to my eyeball and it raises all kinds of heck. I get the tearing up and it's need nap tissue. Next on tonight's agenda is real, disposition of real property at Ninth Avenue and Jackson Street. Director Rutgers is speaking to us tonight on page fifty-three to fifty-eight in your packet.
Good evening again. So, back on September twenty-fifth at a regular session, there was some discussion around some real properties owned by the city. You'll look on the, the map in front of you are highlighted in red. This is over by Ninth and Jackson, close to the Helping Hands Shelter, Van Vleet Meet in, in kind of an industrial zone. So the city actually owns three properties there, like say highlighted in red. They are all zoned LI, as is the rest of the block. Those, those three properties range in size from about thirty-six hundred square feet to forty-one hundred square feet.
Director, can you share what LI means?
Uh, sorry, uh, sorry for the abbreviation. LI is light industrial, so it's in an industrial zone. So, the properties highlighted in blue or kind of shaded in blue there, those are all owned by the Helping Hands Shelter. The ones that are unshaded and do not have a red highlight, those are actually under private property ownership. One of them is Ms. Tina Vanderburg at eight thirty-four Ninth, and the other one at eight nineteen is, I, the name of the property owner is, is slipping me right now, but they are under a private ownership. So at, at the, at that council meeting, we, we talked about coming back with some more information about these properties, which is what I'm doing today, and to talk about the disposition of them and if the council were interested in disposing of these properties, there's a couple of different ways to do that. One of them would be to declare the property surplus. And, and both of these properties, the ORS provides two different options there. One of them is, it does require that it be declared surplus, and then you're able to donate that land to another government, government agency or nonprofit, and it could be for free, it could be for a dollar, it could be for some other amount. And then the other option through ORS would, would be to go out through an RFP process for kind of that, that highest and best use, or, or somebody to make their pitch, or a little less formal than that would be an invitation to bid, where you basically put a for sale sign on the property, and you set a hearing date. This would be similar to the process we went through with the Wells Fargo lot, where people come in and make their pitch, which may or may not include a price tag. Council would recess to an executive session to discuss, to see if they wanted to accept any of the offers at all, and then move on from there. One of the things I did want to highlight to kind of help facilitate the discussion is, well, I know the Helping Hands had come forward and asked about, or expressed interest in these properties. We have also received other interest in these properties, one of them from one of, one of the neighbors. So it's, that, that's not Helping Hands, and certainly with the, the challenge with the Helping Hands property, if, if they were to acquire it, anytime we look at the sale of a property or even the donation of a property, we're, we're looking at the utilization of probably a development agreement where we talk about, and spell out the terms of, of that sale or that donation or whatever it's going to be. One of the challenges with the shelters is, is the zoning would have to change. It wouldn't, wouldn't allow for the type of use that Helping Hands currently has, which was legally, legally created, pre-existing, non-conforming, that is a mouthful, but it was created before that zoning was applied. But so it exists today legally because it predated that, that zone. So in order to expand on to, if, if in a scenario they were to acquire those lots, they would have to go through a zone change and comp plan amendment to amend that out of an LI zone into a different zone that would allow that type of use, which is, just bringing that up because that is a, that's a step in the process. I'm not saying it's impossible, it's just an additional step. So this is really bringing this information forward for the council to discuss, and, and also remember that we have people ask about properties quite often, if they're for sale. This is not, the disposition of these properties is, is really for your discussion and your input, and, and there is no requirement that we dispose of them. You know, obviously, the, the properties that we currently show here on the map, two of them actually came in, into use because we had them in the very recent past. If, if we hadn't have had these properties then, then maybe that use wouldn't have occurred. So i- it's, I, I guess it's maybe a cautionary tale of just because it's asked for doesn't mean that we should always do it. And I'm not, not trying to guide you one way or the other, just there is no pressure that we have to dispose of them. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or different scenarios. It's, it's really, it's really for you guys to discuss.
Counsel, are there any questions from the director? Councilor Molligui. I'll go, Councilor Newton Nazar.
So, so let's say we would consider changing the zoning in, in, on this property. Would, would that include the entire kind of area? Because it seems like all, that everything in that area is not necessarily being used as light industrial in that specific little island there.
I- in this particular blo- block, there really isn't an industrial use.
Right.
To be honest with you.
Would we, would you, like, if we were to do that, would, would staff's recommendation be, let's look at this whole area and get that non-conformance kind of cleared up too?
I- if, if there was a, if you were to look at changing that zoning, you wouldn't want to, you know, that, you run into something called spot zoning.
Yeah.
You're, you're zoning one particular spot that may or may not fit. If you were to do something, you'd want to do it on this kind of entire block level because realistically, to, to do a use like Helping Hands has, has talked about, you, you would want, they, they would need all the property to look like that, you know, the, again, this, the, the cautionary tale of, of going down that path is, that would have to be spelled out in a development agreement to avoid, you know, committing the time, the effort, the money into rezoning a piece of property, doing a cop, comp plan amendment. You'd want to make sure that there was, they were financially able to do that, and that would be done through a development agreement that actually has, when the property would exchange hands, so those, those pieces would have to be done, and, and it has to be structured in a way that you're not doing contract planning, which is highly illegal, so that you're, you're guaranteeing an approval on something because a zone change comp plan amendment, that is a type four process, or type, yeah, that's going to go to planning commission, and then again to council. So it's, it's not a simple process by any stretch of the imagination. And you know, i- if it was, there's a lot of questions if we were to go down that path, if the city were to, to initiate that zone change, I would recommend against that, to be honest with you, for, for many reasons. One, it requires an immense amount of staff time, which we do not budget for, so.
Well, and, everything in this area is light industrial, it would, it would, even though you, you're not having like spot zoning, it would still kind of be spot zoning because it's like this little island amongst all the light industrial, right?
Yeah, on- once you cross the highway, there's some residential zones that would allow for this type of use, so there, there's a case that could be made there. So I'm not, I'm not saying it's impossible to do, or that, that we couldn't get there. It's, it
Not insignificant.
It does have its challenges.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Newton Nazar.
What is the fair market value for this property? Do we know?
So on the, the bottom of your mindo, and, and thank you for bringing that up, I, I was gonna mention that in there. The, from the assessor's office, the fair market value or real market value would be about a hundred and sixty-six thousand. One of the other pieces, and this was actually in my recommendation in the memo, was that if we were going to consider even disposing of, that's the first question is, do we want to dispose of it? Do you want to divest our interest in this land? Before we took any step beyond that is, once that decision was made, yes, we, we don't, we don't want these properties anymore, my recommendation would be to go out and actually get an appraisal done so that you know what you have, before you make any decision on, final decision on, yes, we, we absolutely want to get rid of it, or maybe we don't. So I, I guess that would be my, my first step, if we want to do anything other than just continue to own them, then I would say, let, let's get an appraisal done.
Was that one hundred and sixty-six thousand per parcel?
That's total.
That's total?
That's total.
So really, for next steps, we should just be directing Director Rutger, Rutgers to be going forward and getting a
Commercial appraisal.
Yeah, commercial appraisal.
Council, are you comfortable with that?
What's the price of an appraisal?
Uh, we would use an appraiser that we've used in the past out of Portland, just to avoid any potential conflict of interest. If, if we ended up wanting to sell it, you wouldn't want, you know, one of, one of the few commercial real estate appraisers in this area also develops land, so we would go outside. That, that cost is going to be in the three to four thousand dollar range, and certainly, certainly manageable.
Do we have the ability to do that?
Yeah.
For budget?
Yeah, we, we can make that work.
Council?
I'm, I'd like to move that we direct
Let me get comments from everybody before we do that. You have anything?
Um, yeah, I just don't know if this is the right time for me to say this. I actually heard from Ms. Vanderburg today, and she shared some concerns that are not unlike what we heard earlier from the sheriff and the folks who are working for Second Chance with the parking and people walking out into the street and traffic coming to a dead halt right there, and that, that area being a, a direct route to I-5. I just have serious concerns about any sort of expansion of, this is just for future reference, I really have serious concerns based on what I've heard tonight, and also coincidentally from Ms. Vanderburg today, about entertaining any thought of Helping Hands expanding there. I, it's, it's already very, very concerning for reasons that you've heard tonight and for reasons I heard today, and I've been through that area enough times to be aware of it. And so I, I hope that when we get an appraisal and whatever the council does, that they will bear these things in mind.
Thank you.
I really do.
Thank you. Councilor Kopczynski, do you have anything? Councilor Kopczynski? Councilor Neighbor Katskinski?
Yes, okay. Turn on, turn on my mic, turn on my mic. I think Director Rutgers said that before, before we go out and get an appraisal, we have to decide whether or not we're interested in even retaining or selling the property.
Are, are we not allowed to learn about what we have and have that inform our decision?
We, we absolutely can get the appraisal, you know, obviously, if it's, if there was zero interest in doing anything with the property, then why spend the money on the appraisal? But if, you know, obviously, certainly understand that having that appraisal in front of you helps inform that decision, so it, it was really, if there was a, a feeling amongst the council that we absolutely don't want to divest our interest, then there's no need to spend the money on appraisal, but if there is this, hey, maybe there is an option here, then we, we absolutely should move forward with an appraisal first.
Then my, then my comment would be, let's move forward with getting the appraisal.
Councilor McGee had something as well.
I do have a, you said that we, this is not something that we have to make, it's not a rush like fire situation. So when, if we decide to not do, or would you bring this back, and when would that be?
So i- if I'm given the direction to go get an appraisal, I'll get started
I mean, if you're not given that direction. Like, if we say we don't want to do nothing with it.
Then I'm, I'm not bringing it back until the council requests me to bring something back.
I was just, I was just wondering, because you said it's not a rushing, and at some point, we needed some properties, or, and we had it, and we don't want to be in a position where if we need something, and we don't have it, right? Okay.
There is no, you know, obviously, there was, there's been requests out there and an interest, and
I mean, we have to entertain it, right?
Correct.
Right.
Counsel, what would you like to do?
I'm curious, in knowing what we have, and let that information inform our next steps, I'd like to move that we direct Director Rutgers to get a commercial appraisal of the properties.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. Excuse me, I did it again, business from the council. Councilor Novak, we're gonna work this way. Councilor Novak, go first, please.
I have a couple things. First, there was what I consider to be a very helpful and informative meeting that took place yesterday at Knife River Facility, which I've never been to prior to that, and I want to thank members of staff, Mr. Rutgers, and Rob Emmons, Chris Bailey, Peter, and also Representative Shelley Bosshardt Davis, and the chairs of the North Albany Neighborhood Association, along with some concerned residents, and representatives from ODOT. It was, it was, I think, the first time I've ever been in a meeting quite like that, and I, I think there should be more of them. I really, Peter, if I didn't say your name, I meant you too. I, I don't know if I said that, but, good. I, it really, I, I thought it was helpful. Also, incoming counselor Michael Thompson was there, and I appreciated that. So, and it was, it was, it did my heart good to learn that Rob Emmons actually lives up in North Albany, so he is well familiar with the things that I've been voicing for some time now regarding traffic and other issues we have up there. At any rate, I was very grateful that that meeting took place, and the other thing that I have to share is a comment from a constituent, and this is in regard to something that, well, I'll just, I'll just read it to you. It's, it's not a discussion, it's just sharing information from a constituent regarding Valis Core. He says, "Just because that area is lower income doesn't mean they should be subjected to being poisoned. They're coming to Albany because Cor Valis would in no way allow this, this one of their resident, in one of their residential neighborhoods. Here's Governor McCall's opinion on letting chemical plants into community neighborhoods." A quote from Tom McCall. "Oregon is demure and lovely, and it ought to play a little hard to get. And I think you'll be just as sick as I am if you find it is nothing but a hungry hussy throwing herself at every stinking smokestack that's offered." I, I think that is an effective quote, and I appreciate input from the people who live in this town, and I hope you all will appreciate that as well for future decision-making. Thank you.
Councilor Molligui.
I, I have nothing.
Councilor Smith.
I'd like to open the topic of expanding the parking zone, Eleventh and Jackson. I don't see any problem with that. I think that's a good idea. We, the system is set up already, it's a matter of changing the boundaries. I, I would, can I address my question to Officer Shendell for expert advice? Could you tell us where the current boundaries are, and how, what the process, remind us of the process for moving them?
Yes, so the current boundaries are along Ninth and Jackson, and then from the overpass, Pacific overpass to the railroad tracks. It skips from the railroad tracks to Thirteenth, however, from Thirteenth and Eleventh, as they go westbound to Montgomery and Industrial, it kind of circles around and ends at Queen.
But Jackson itself is not
But Jackson itself
Is outside the street.
Has not, in the past, we didn't put it there because of not wanting to place restrictions on the Sheriff Department, because all their staff was there, they have tons of staff, and it was, seemed like a big uptake, so we just didn't put it in that location. So, so adding it to the code would be easy, it's just re, adding a new definition to highlight that section.
And then employees of the sheriff's office would get the employee parking permits like the employees of the others west of there?
Absolutely, yes.
That's what I, that's what my question was.
No.
Do you want to make a motion?
I, I meant to mention that as well, so, because I, I, I also wanted to ask for an IGA between Albany and the sheriff's department, if we need that. Maybe this permitting of the parking changes that need, but it's very concerning to me when, when people at Second Chance and our own sheriff's department are concerned for their staff and their safety. We really need to do something about that. Thank you, I apologize, I really meant to say that. Thanks for letting me.
So, you have something?
Um, I was asking
Are you, are you addressing him?
Uh, Counselor Smith, if she was wanting to make a motion, wasn't sure what
Just to be clear, there's no IGA required. If, if the coun, if it's the council direction to expand that, I would just recommend, and there's an emotion, and if there's a motion, identify where it is that you want that to be, so it's bounded.
Can you, can we have him bring that back with the actual language?
My recommendation would be to just have it end at Thirteenth, which would kind of just go where it already turns naturally back down to Montgomery and Industrial. So it'd kind of just encapsulate where they're wanting it to anyways.
The north boundary, is that, is that Seventh or is it Ninth?
The north boundary is where it turns from Seventh to Jackson, so just where the bridge is.
Okay, okay. I would move to expand the parking permitted area, or park, well, the, the parking enforcement area in, on the Jackson Street area, the Jackson Street, Eleventh, Thirteenth, to include the Jackson Street, both sides of Jackson Street, from the overpass to Thirteenth Avenue.
And just, um, sorry, just to be sure, because Thirteenth kind of separates, I'm talking about the, it would be the southern Thirteenth.
Yes, it would end south of the old police station, and I can't, it's twelve forty? Is that twelve forty, or it's not? It's a different
Eleven, uh, seven
Seventeen.
Eleven seventeen.
Eleven seventeen, Jackson. Thank you.
In a long time.
So write it up, okay?
Oh, well, is there a motion on the floor right now?
So we have a motion.
And I'll second your motion.
Just want to make sure the language is right.
Can I get clarification real quick from Officer Shendell? Was this created through an ordinance or through a resolution?
Uh, it was a resolution. It was a, there's an ordinance for it, the second expansion, what's a resolution?
Okay, an ordinance, but it allows for expansions through resolution?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I was making sure, because otherwise, if it was just an ordinance, we'd have to amend it with another ordinance, but if we have a resolu, if it's, and the ordinance has language that allows for the expansion or, you know, retraction of that area by resolution, then we're fine.
Now you have me second guessing myself.
So you want to bring that back next?
I will bring it back.
Yeah, let's, yeah, just to be safe.
You directed me to fix it.
Thank you. And that helps the Second Chance people as well, right?
Correct.
Thank you, just want to make sure.
Do you want to draw your motion this weekend? Have him bring it back. Do you want to draw your motion, so we can have him bring it back? Do we have to draw the motion?
I believe my motion was to ask him to do something to bring back. That's, that was the gist of it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no? Thank you, Counselor Newton Azor.
Oh, well, thank you. It has been a lovely week feeling healthy, um, no longer sick, which is wonderful. I, I did want to address, I apologize to Christine Ferguson, I was out sick. I was not able to attend the Veteran of the Year banquet, but I'll be able to attend the next year. Um, and then I also wanted to, um, thank Susan Leonard for her comments. I do agree that having a, having safe schools is a key factor in a desirable, healthy community. And then I also have a very nosy question for Mr. Kidd. Uh, you know the property that we, we, we believe we discussed this about two meetings ago? Um, the folks that had the illegal dumping. I know you said that they had some court dates, can you give us an update on what's been going on with that property?
Uh, you're talking about, I think, Grand Prairie?
Yes, correct.
There were some code violations out there, and yes, interestingly enough, um, last Wednesday, they were scheduled to appear in municipal court, and they, what we call in the court system, the FTA, they failed to appear. So Judge, um, she issued, Judge Meyer issued, um, a warrant. It's a site warrant, so it doesn't mean they're going to go kicking down doors and dragging people out of houses or anything, but it's, it means if they're picked up again, then they'll be cited to come back in the court, and they'll have that on top of it. Um, my communication with the police as of last Wednesday was that the property was not in compliance yet. So that's, uh, where we're, so the owner didn't show up for court, and it's not in compliance right now.
So are, what we did a few meetings ago...
So I believe the meeting a few, a few weeks ago, and I think Matthew can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we made a condition of a final plat approval, that the, the property had to be in compliance, is that right?
Yes, uh, so there was a self-imposed condition, as I kind of, I believe I actually spoke to you guys about this at the time we were doing it, that the, the applicants actually imposed on themselves, and we were able to do that because they imposed it on themselves, which, that the property would be in compliance prior to the final plat being recorded, which essentially means all of the things that they want, the partition that they're wanting to do, cannot be in effect, cannot be completed until the property is in compliance because of that land use condition.
Okay.
So it, it will still sit unpartitioned until such time as Mr. Kidd tells me that they have come into compliance.
All right.
And I guess as a follow-up too, I believe that, uh, code enforcement is going to start issuing fines again because of, they, they had been given some time where the, the fines were abated to get into compliance, and it's not happening, or not happening fast enough anyway. So I believe they're going to start issuing fines again, if they haven't already.
And so, and there are already liens on that property, are those city liens?
There's not, unless, no, there's, there's not, uh, any, at the moment, there were city liens on the property. Those liens have been transferred to a, a private party, um, they, that owned, that held the mortgage on the property, like a purchase money mortgage on the property, and the city sold their rights of that, of that lien to them about two years ago, I believe, two or three years ago. So there's liens on the property, I just, yeah, but they're not city liens, although that's going to probably change here in the next month or so, so.
Okay, thanks for the update. Yeah?
Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes, this is a tangential question for Chief LaBelle on the ambulance service fee increase. I'm just wondering, will that have any effect whatsoever on the fire med fees?
Chief, uh, okay, there he is.
Thank you for asking the question, Counselor Kupczynski, he was on my list, thank you.
So, great question. Uh, we had just increased a couple years ago the fire med fees, uh, so we did address it this go-around. Uh, but probably the next time we visit it, we'll look at it. But since it's, it had happened in the last couple of years, we didn't mess with that one.
Thank you.
Counselor McGee?
Nothing tonight.
So I'm glad Counselor Kupczynski raised that question regarding fire med. A couple years ago, I made the motion to increase it by five dollars, uh, and it passed. And, uh, my, my, in my professional world, um, I encourage everyone that I interact with to get fire med, because it helps, and helps mitigate the cost of the transportation to and from hospitals. Um, next thing is, I attended something called Random Acts of Kindness at the Boys and Girls Club. I had a classroom full of fourth, third, fourth, and fifth graders, and they questioned me for about an hour about me, about the city, about my life, my favorite animal. And it was really nice to have these children asking these questions, because kids are unfiltered, and I love doing those kinds of things, and one kid guessed the name of my pet pig when I grew up, and it was bacon, and the kids got a chuckle out of that. So it was a really nice afternoon to break up my busy day. Uh, and then, um, fire med was already done. So regarding the strike, I want people to understand that as the city council or the mayor, um, I cannot support one way or the other. I can express my concerns for the children and the impact of the strike on them. And I hope the teachers fare well, and I hope that they negotiate with the, with the union and the school board, and we can resolve this as soon as possible. And there's been comments that I don't support schools, and anybody that has known me or seen me interact with the kids knows that's not true. Uh, and unfortunate text that went around, that people assumed that I wrote, was, um, inappropriate, and we got to the bottom of it, and I did let this, this teacher that came to visit with me know that I did not write that text. And so I just hope that we come to a safe and equitable resolution to the strike. We need to get our children back in school. The kids thrive in school, I, I'm a product of public schools, my children as well. And I hope that we can move past this, get our kids back in school, because the If-Or-Or Mayor Contest starts in January, and I would love to have kids participate in that program. We have done quite well over the last four years. Our children have won first, second, and third in state, all three years we've had the program, and I'm looking forward to continuing that performance, and then encouraging other mayors around the state to participate as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things, I wanted to point out that the contract, the Open Gov contract, is not a contract for hourly services, it's a pretty comprehensive contract, and the statement of work that's included in there is very descriptive and very detailed. Exhibit one, which talks about hours of service provided, is not comprehensive, it's not a comprehensive list of what's provided. It, it does include hours of training provided in certain services, but it doesn't include licensing, it doesn't include project management, it doesn't include maintenance and support, and status meetings that are provided, and of course, the amortized cost of developing and maintaining software. So all of that has to be figured in, which is why it's one lump sum like that. And then in the end, uh, the contract is thoroughly vetted by IT staff as well. So, uh, council can rest assured that it's a competitive contract. Uh, the only other thing was that, um, in December, uh, the council's workload is light enough that we're able to cancel the December twenty-third work session. So we'll have the two meetings, uh, at the first week, or in the first two weeks of December, that'll comply with the charter's requirement, but we do, do not need the twenty-third as a meeting. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for that great report. Uh, next meeting is Mondays to December ninth at four PM, and it's a work session, and December eleventh at six PM for our last city council meeting of the year. And y'all have a wonderful Thanksgiving, enjoy the bird, the ham, the prime rib, whatever it is you're going to eat.
Tacos.
And she says tacos, I'm going with that too. But, um, and please enjoy your family, and watch a lot of football, because I will be doing the same thing.